Our flag is raised in the right of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on foundation under God and with his wisdom, with the good deed of the Lord. Ms. Alberta. Ms. Alkira. Ms. Ranopoulos.
Here.
Ms. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Drell.
Here.
Ms. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Ballack.
Here.
Ms. DeBodoff.
Here.
At all good notice that this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice consent of Harold and News Director South Burnite.
The third.
Township Clerk and post in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office. Setting the forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. At this time, we're going to make our presentations of recognition and our superintendent, Mrs. DeMar.
I think a lot of us are just soaking this in right now because it is so wonderful to have this many people in board meetings. So, thank you so much and thank you for letting us try to pick your names. Thank you. We are really here for some really, really fabulous celebrations and we mean that sincerely because we have the distinct privilege and honor tonight of recognizing multiple, multiple groups for a variety of accomplishments. And we really want to make sure that you understand it's the most prestigious achievements that lead to this place. So whether it's an act of service, whether it is an award that was given, whether it is being able to compete at a higher level because of performance, or whether it is that a significant item or piece of work received glorious recognition, we always want to make sure that all of that that's happening out there is then celebrated here as well. So we're going to start tonight by honoring some of our educators. And this group of educators is an extremely special group and they really, really did us proud. Every year, the Bergen County Utilities Authority offers grants in the amount up to $1,000 to any educator in a school, so we're limited to one per school, who is willing to put forward an idea for improving the environment, whether it's a recycling project, whether it is water filtration. And there's a lot in love. They have to really articulate their plans, have a very clear vision, and be able to propose that and put forward their application. Those applications are then reviewed and in the hall, all recipients are recognized and honored and invited to a beautiful breakfast ceremony in which they receive their grants. So this year, we were fortunate enough to have an educator from every single one of our nine facilities interested in attempting a grant. And they all went for the highest amount. They were all looking for $1,000 each. And out of every single district in the county of Bergen, Lindhurst received the most because every single grant application resulted in a $1,000 grant for these incredible educators. So at this time, we're going to call them up, present them with a certificate, and the educators, as they come up, will just ask that you stay up here so in the end, we can get a group picture of all of you and your group accomplishments. Our first recipient is Mrs. Melissa Mulett. Our next recipient is another Melissa, Ms. Melissa Manzillo. Our third recipient is Mrs. Stacy Telen. Our next recipient, Ms. Samantha Holland. And now, Katie Lynn Booth. And Alyssa Maria. Yes, we do have the males represented, Mr. Jimmy Day. Ms. Ashley Hubbard. And I want to recognize another educator who I think was unable to attend and will listen to things, but I want to double check, Mr. John Klebis. Behind all of these great grant writers are the principals who arrange the coverage for them to be able to work on the grants, to be able to attend the ceremonies, and make sure their students are well taken care of. So if we have any principals in the audience, please come on up and enjoy your teachers here.
I'm going to ask Mr. Ryan Lang to come up before we present these two of ours. So Mr. Lang is our vocal music teacher for our elementary students. And each year, he pulls our students out and works hard to make sure that all the ensembles of choir are ready and singing properly. So this year, I guess he recommended two of our students go and try out for the Bergen County Choir, which is extremely difficult to eventually make and be accepted. Just to put it into perspective a little bit, for each position that's available, there's about 100 students in all Bergen County that audition for each of these roles. And this year, we were lucky enough to have two students selected to the Bergen County Choir. So I'm going to book each student up to be recognized. So the first student is Alexis Ower. Alexis wants to say a volunteer. And then our next student to be accepted to the Bergen County Choir is Dean Watts. Two students. Thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, so I'm starting to learn from the students, but they're going to do it much better. So I've always been a less person. I always have my speeches written and everything listed. But now, when we have various events and the kids have to give a speech, I say, "Why don't they have their phones up? They have their speeches right on their phones." So I decided this time that I was going to give this a try. So here we go. We're going to see how this goes. The other reason for using the phone for this purpose is because if I had papers with these lists, I might have about five or six pages. So we're being a little economical with our paper here because the next group of awards will go down to a very, very, very important group. And this is the group that creates our Lighthouse Newspaper. So before we begin speaking about these incredible prestigious awards that our newspaper recognized, I'm going to ask a few people to come up because without their help and their constant support, this paper certainly wouldn't be possible. So we'll start with the principal of the high school, Ms. Laura Buna. Supervisor of the 7th through 12th English and Social Studies, Ms. Lisa Pine. And our incredible and very humble newspaper advisor, Ms. Tanya Capper. So each year, the Garden State Scholastic Press Association holds a contest and what they do is they do a point accumulation procedure in order to create the category winners in each area. This year, the Lighthouse had over, I believe, 31 awards that it received from the Garden State Scholastic Press. And we had multiple awards in multiple categories. So what we're going to do is we're going to call up the recipients who are able to be here. Please understand that some of these recipients are students who graduated with a class of 2017 because the awards are from last year, so they may not be able to be here with us tonight. But certainly, if they are, we want them to come up and be recognized as well. So when we call your name, please come on up and take a spot up here and all squeeze together and celebrate this with one another. So a first place award for reviews and entertainment was Julie Cappiello. Julie also received a first place award for the category of columns. A first place award was given to Nick Pacheco for sports writing. And to Nicolette Pizzola for art and illustration. And our final first place award in the individual category went to George Roush for feature writing. Our second place award for us follows, for news writing, Gillian Cansella. And here's what happens when you use electronics.
Ready?
Ready, too. Ready, too. We're going to jump over my photos and do the screen shots. Okay, so here we go. We're going to try and get this one more go here. And we're going to go back to those first place awards. And we're going to recognize Sarah Almeda for news writing. Emma Chloe Comano for columns. Bernie Consavo for opinion writing. Julie Casillo for layout and design. For the recording team, we had Alexa Ferreros. Emma Chloe Comano. And our Gabriel. And Kayla Sanchez. And that's for the category of in-depth reporting. Second place awards went to the following, Jessie Bolton for photography. Emma Chloe Comano, you're rocking it, feature writing. Sebastian Carrera for art and illustration. Gillian Cansella for news writing. Alyssa Capazzo for editorial cartooning. Julie Casillo also won a second place award for layout and design. And Jennifer Ward also took second place for sports writing. Okay, our third place award winners, Alexis Ferreros for news writing. Emma Chloe Comano for photography. And Emma Chloe Comano for reviews and entertainment. All right, Campbell Donovan with columns. Julie Casillo also won three third place awards, one for editorial cartooning, one for editorial writing, and one for layout and design. Gabriela Savasino won a third place award for news writing. And the recording team for their in-depth reporting that won their place awards was as follows. Zulie Arias. Jamie Connors. Joanna Capage. Alexis Criego. And Kayla Sanchez. And we had numerous honorable mentions as well. They are as follows for reviews and entertainment. Alexa Ferreros. For sports writing, we had an honorable mention award for Gillian Cansella. And winner of two honorable mention awards for sports writing went to Sean Leonard. Julie Casillo also won an honorable mention for editorial writing. And Lauren Sidgoffy won an honorable mention for editorial cartooning. Nancy Ganesia, honorable mention, sports writing. And Kelly Westine for art and illustration. Inceo also won honorable mention for sports writing. And the recording team as a whole for their in-depth recording won honorable mentions and that group was as follows, Sarah Almedo, Zulie Arias, Steph Salento, Joanna Capage, and Alexis Criego. Steph is now ready for her college newspaper, so bear with her. And before we go ahead and group them all together for our photo, I want you to take a good look at this group because as a whole, the Lighthouse placed first in New Jersey Distinguished Journalism and second in overall excellence. These are the highest categories. And please join me giving a final round of applause for, again, the very humble leadership and talent and expertise behind the theme of tactics and style of journalism. And now we have another large group here for recognition. And I know that that's a special presentation from Senator Sarlow's office. So I'm just looking and inviting anyone from Senator Sarlow's office to come on up to recognize the special group of students.
That's actually specially.
Especially? That's fantastic.
As you know, we recently had an event. It was our Super Bowl for Special Angels. And we just were so amazed at the way different groups from Lindhurst High School embraced this. I'm hearing about the wonderful things that these children have accomplished here at the high school. But what you don't know is that this high school has instilled huge hearts in these kids as well. It's not only academics or wonderful writing and all of that, but what they learned here is how to have a huge heart. Because everybody that supported this event, I can't say enough about them. 12 years ago, there was nothing for my grandson to participate in. Nothing. And we decided to try to start something. And I came to, who was then Mayor Richard Delazio and Commissioner Tom DiMaggio. And I told them what I wanted to do. And both Mayor Delazio and Commissioner DiMaggio embraced this with open arms. And if it wasn't for those two men, we wouldn't be here today 12 years later doing the wonderful things that we do. But tonight is not about us. Tonight is about the wonderful organizations that stepped up and did an amazing job. And I approached Senator Sarlow and Assemblyman Shear and I asked them if they could write resolutions to commemorate what the kids and the coaches and the teachers have done for our children. So the first one that I have... And by the way, Senator, not Senator Sarlow, Assemblyman Shear wanted to be here desperately, but at the last minute today, he called and he had previous engagement, so he couldn't be here. And this was supposed to be done at a mayor's meeting, but they couldn't really... They couldn't do it quickly. And I wanted this to be done while it was still fresh in everyone's head. So we were lucky enough to get the board event, which I think this is where it belongs anyway. So the first one that I would like to read is for... This is for, I want to save that for this. This one is for the Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleaders and coaches. If they'd like, whoever's here would like to come up while I read this and take a picture. Anyone here for the important... Okay, this comes from a joint legislative resolution. It's by Senator Sarlow, Assemblyman Shear, and Assemblywoman Karidi. And it's the Senate and General Assembly. And it says, "Whereas the Senate and General Assembly of the state of New Jersey are pleased to salute and commend the Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleaders and their coaches, all esteemed members of the Garden State community in recognition of their exceptional efforts during the Special Angels Super Bowl on October 23rd, 2017. And whereas on that day, Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleaders gave generously of their time and talent in behalf of the Special Angels football team by creating and performing cheers for the Special Angels players and inspiring a sense of camaraderie. And their coaches are especially appreciated for providing capable and effective guidance of this praiseworthy initiative. And whereas by demonstrating an uncommon degree of dedication to their fellow citizens, the Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleaders and their coaches have earned a measure of respect and admiration. And whereas the strength and success of the state of New Jersey and the vitality of our American society depend in great measure upon concerned and devoted citizens exemplified by the Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleaders and their coaches, who utilize their unique insight and energy to benefit their community. And whereas it is altogether proper and fitting for this legislature to pause in its deliberations to recognize the Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleaders and their coaches and praise them as individuals for outstanding character and determination. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Senate and General Assembly of the state of New Jersey that this legislature hereby honors the Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleaders and their coaches, pay tribute to their meritorious record of service, leadership, and commitment, and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and the Assembly Speaker and attested by the Senate Secretary and the Assembly Clerk, be transmitted to the Lindhurst High School varsity cheerleader and their coaches." This is for you guys to keep. I wanted to get every single child that participated in this event. I must think everyone had their own hobby, but I guess it was too much. So I want to thank you girls from the bottom of my heart because what you did that night meant so much to our boys. They got to know what it was like to be in a real Super Bowl because they had cheerleaders and they had a band and they had the football players. They had everyone out there doing what you do every week at a varsity football game. Our kids will never forget that. So from my heart, I want to thank you for everything that you did. So from my heart, I want to thank you for everything that you did that night.
Okay, next we have the same type of resolution for the marching band, the Lindhurst marching band. And it starts out the same, and then it says, "Whereas on that date, the members of the Lindhurst High School marching band gave generously of their time and talents by playing music throughout the night for the Special Angels football team, and under the capable guidance of the marching band teachers, their superb performance provided inspiration and camaraderie to all those who attended this event. Whereas by demonstrating an uncommon degree of dedication to their fellow citizens, the Lindhurst High School marching band and their teachers have earned a measure of respect and admiration. And whereas the strength and success of the State of New Jersey and the vitality of American society depend in great measure upon concerned and devoted citizens exemplified by the Lindhurst High School marching band and their teachers, who utilize their unique insight and energies to benefit their community. And whereas it is altogether proper and fitting for the legislature to pause in its deliberations to recognize the Lindhurst High School marching band and their coaches and praise them as individuals of outstanding character and determination. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature hereby honors the Lindhurst High School marching bands and their teachers, pays tribute to their meritorious record of service, leadership, and commitment, and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and the Assembly Speaker, and attested by the Senate Secretary and the Assembly Clerk, be transmitted to the Lindhurst High School marching band and their teachers." Is anybody here from the Lindhurst High School marching band?
I know there were definitely a lot more kids there that night, and I understand that they couldn't make it, but I want you to know that there were quite a few kids there in that band, and they were playing loud and proud. And our kids have never, ever experienced anything like that. Kyle is very lucky, he has a wonderful coach, Coach Toro, who allows him to be a part of the football team each week in his own way. So he gets to feel that wonderful feeling, but my other kids don't get that. So thank you so much for what you did that night. You made these kids feel so special, and you guys are just amazing. Okay, this next one is for Sarah Madonna, who's not only sent for our Super Bowl, but comes out every year for our Shooting for the Stars, where our basketball players play at the Lindhurst Police Department. Sarah comes out every year, and she's the most amazing singer I've ever heard. So I want to keep her in on this. And it starts out the same way, and then it says, "Whereas on that date, Sarah Madonna, an exemplary student at Lindhurst High School, shared with us her superb vocal talents by singing the national anthem during the Special Angels Super Bowl. And whereas in completing this performance, Sarah Madonna has proven herself to be a dedicated citizen with exceptional abilities, and she has brought pride and distinction to her family, her school, and her community. And whereas the strength and success of the State of New Jersey and the vitality of our American society depend in great measure upon concerned and dynamic students exemplified by Sarah Madonna, who utilize their unique talent and energies to benefit their community. And whereas it is altogether proper and fitting for this legislature to pause in its deliberations to recognize Sarah Madonna and to praise her as an individual of outstanding character and determination. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature hereby honors Sarah Madonna, pays tribute to her selfless endeavors to do benefit of others, and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in the years ahead. And be it further resolved that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and the Assembly Speaker, and attested by the Senate Secretary and the Assembly Clerk, be transmitted to Sarah Madonna." I have to say that in every newspaper article, they left out the most important pass in this whole event, and that was that it was Pat's brainstorm. It was his idea. He called Coach Toro, and my daughter and I took a meeting at the Lindhurst diner, and he came up, he gave us this three-part amazing idea, started off with a kick-pot pass and have Special Angels night, where our kids wore the same jerseys, but I'll get into that when I talk about what the football players did, where they were matching numbers, and ended to this amazing Super Bowl. So this was Pat's idea, and I really wanted to do something special for him because he not only did he brainstorm this, but every Saturday, when he can be home resting, he comes out an hour earlier to announce for my boys when we played football every Saturday. So it starts out the same, "Whereas the State and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey are pleased to salute and commend Pat Glover, a highly esteemed member of the Garden State community, in recognition of his exceptional efforts in behalf of the Special Angels football team, which culminated with the Special Angels Super Bowl on October 23rd, 2017. And whereas Pat Glover demonstrated an uncommon degree of dedication by spearheading a superb partnership between the Lindhurst High School varsity football team and the Special Angels football team, earning for himself a measure of respect and admiration. And whereas, in addition, Pat Glover was, has given un- I can't breathe. -of his time, well, go on, and talent to the Special Angels football team by attending their weekly Saturday games to help set up and act as an announcer. And whereas the shenanigans success of the State of New Jersey and the vitality of our American society depends in great measure upon concerned and devoted citizens exemplified by Pat Glover, who utilize their unique insight and energies to benefit their community. And whereas it is altogether proper and fitting for this legislature to pause in its deliberations to recognize Pat Glover and to praise him as an individual of outstanding character and exceptional determination. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature hereby honors Pat Glover, pays tribute to his meritorious record of service, leadership, and commitment, and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and the Assembly Speaker, and attested by the Senate Secretary and the Assembly Okay, and the last one that I want to read, and then we hope we're done, I know this is kind of long, is to Coach Toro and the varsity football players. They really planned this out with Pat's guidance, and Rich Toro took right over it and got the boys together. They orchestrated the most amazing kick-pot pass that my boys would have ever experienced. They got to do drills, they got to learn skills. The boys were amazing with our children, most of them becoming friends with the child that they mentor, giving gifts, a couple of the kids got gifts. And I heard them talking about what they liked to do and what they didn't, and I believe he's the captain of the football team, Jordan. He got Lizzie, Lizzie's girl with autism, and Lizzie was more infatuated with the cheerleaders than she was with playing football. And I saw him go out there and cheer with her and wave those pom-poms around, and I said to him, "I know you want to be out there playing football, Bella will take Lizzie, and you go out there and do your thing." And he said, "Absolutely not." And he stayed with Lizzie, and he helped her wave those pom-poms. And a couple of the other boys were talking about how they would rather do this every night of the week than anything else, and the words and the, I can't tell you what I heard being out in that field from these kids. I just can't even express to you all the heart that these kids have. It's just genuine, and I never even thanked them because it means so much to them. My kids, they're still talking about it. So thank you so much, and I just want to read what they said, and it starts out the same way, and then it goes, "Whereas the admired members of the Lindhurst High School varsity football team have demonstrated an uncommon degree of dedication to the Special Angels football team through an array of events and programs, including by spearheading a kick-pot pass camp. And whereas, in addition to providing mentorship and encouragement during the Special Angels Super Bowl, the Lindhurst High School varsity football team also hosted a Special Angels night at their first home game, where the varsity football team and the Special Angels football team had corresponding numbers to inspire camaraderie. And whereas the coaches of the Lindhurst High School varsity football team are especially noted for their unwavering devotion to this praiseworthy initiative, which is particularly evident in their guidance of the varsity football team as they planned the kick-pot pass camp for the Special Angels team. And whereas the strength and success of the State of New Jersey and the vitality of our American society depend in great measure upon concerned and devoted citizens exemplified by the members of the Lindhurst High School varsity football team and their coaches, who utilize their unique insight and energies to benefit their community. And whereas it is altogether fitting and proper for the legislature to pause in its deliberations to recognize the Lindhurst varsity football team and coaches and praise them as individuals of outstanding character and determination. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature hereby honors the members of the Lindhurst High School varsity football team and their coaches, pays tribute to their meritorious record of service, leadership, and commitment, and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and the Assembly Speaker, and attested by the Senate Secretary and the Assembly Clerk, be transmitted to the Lindhurst High School varsity football team and their coaches." And by the way, the coaches in the Super Bowl, the coaches played against my Special Angels, and the varsity football team mentored them, and the coaches were out there, I think they had as good a time as my kids did. They were out there having a great time, it was so great to see something like this. And I want to add that I'm so proud that my grandson goes to such an amazing high school that instilled this type of, this type of behavior towards our Special Angels kids. It's just amazing to watch. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and I'd like the football coaches And the varsity soccer coaches participated in the game as well.
All right, guys, the cheerleaders did this really, really well.
And before we conclude this presentation, I just really wanted, you know, take some time to recognize and applaud the incredible work of Miss Gabby Werblek and all of the Special Angels group, because we learn so much from what you described to be your kids.
Okay, approval of minutes from the October 30th meeting number 11. I'm in motion. I'll set.
Mr. Grandopoulos, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Mr. Grelle, four. Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Brownlee?
Four.
Vona?
Four.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facility and district planning committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that 1 through 17 be adopted.
Seven.
Mr. Grandopoulos, four. Mr. Donovan, four. Mr. Grelle, four. Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Malvin?
Four.
Mr. Vona?
Education and curriculum, Josephine?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education and curriculum committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that the following actions of the board- Hearing none, I move that the following actions of board number one through seven be adopted.
Second.
Rocco?
Mr. Enjnaples, four.
Mr. Donovan, four.
Mr. Grelle, four.
Ms. Jarvis, four.
Ms. Malick, four.
Mr. Donut, four.
Policy and rules and regulations. Jim?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies, rules, regulations, committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the expected actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we accept numbers one through four.
Second.
Rocco?
Mr. Enjnaples, four.
Mr. Donovan, four.
Mr. Grelle, four.
Ms. Jarvis, four.
Ms. Malick, four.
Mr. Donut, four.
Athletic student activities and substance abuse, Sheriff.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of other alleged student activities, substance abuse committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that one through seven be accepted.
Second.
Rocco?
Mr. Enjnaples, four.
Mr. Donovan, four.
Mr. Grelle, four.
Ms. Jarvis, four.
Ms. Malick, four.
Mr. Donut, four.
Community relations and safety and security, Josephine?
Any board member who takes exception to the following action under the category of community relations and safety, security committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each will be entertained. Hearing none, be it resolved that the South Bergen Joint Institute conducted a school bus emergency evacuation drill on October 27th, 2017, at the Rodak Campus, 123 Union Street, Rodak, New Jersey, in the parking lot of the school at 8:00 a.m. This bus evacuation drill was held by Lauren Basol, the principal, Nick Gladie, the bus driver, and John A. Carwood, the bus crew.
Second.
Rocco?
Mr. Enjnaples, four.
Mr. Donovan, four.
Mr. Grelle, four.
Ms. Jarvis, four.
Ms. Malick, four.
Mr. Donut, four.
Do we have any new business? Baylon?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that one through five be adopted. Second.
Rocco?
Mr. Enjnaples, four.
Mr. Donovan, four.
Mr. Grelle, four.
Ms. Jarvis, four.
Ms. Malick, four.
Mr. Donut, four.
Personnel committee? Ms. Malick?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that items numbered one through twenty be adopted.
Second.
Rocco? Mr. Enjnaples, four.
Mr. Donovan, four.
Mr. Grelle, excuse me, four.
Ms. Jarvis, four.
Ms. Malick, four.
Mr. Donut, four.
Public hearing on non-agendative, do we have any? Hearing none? Want to have a motion for adjournment? Rocco? Who's doing what? Adjourn.